Good morning. Welcome to the June 26, 2023 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. All of you stand, please, and our commission captain, Romel McMurray, will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Good morning. Let us pray. Most gracious and all wise God, I want to start off by saying thank you for allowing us all to see this amazing day. It's because of your grace and your mercy that we are still here today and to do your work. It is you who keeps providing. It is you who is the sustainer, and it's you who is the king of kings and the lord of lords. I ask that you continue to bless each individual that's under the sound of my voice that's here in this chamber today and watching online. Father God, I ask that you continue to heal our lands. We need you as a people. Men broken hearts, heal broken relationships, and restore civility amongst our fellow neighbors. We, as a people, shall thrive and as a nation, and we shall not perish. Disagreements can be and will be made, but at the end of the day, compromises and love will prevail. I ask that you be with us this morning as we make critical and important decisions for our county going forward. Guide us and grant us the wisdom in the way that you think we should go. Leadership is not about being popular or having power, but it's all about doing the right thing at the right time. We know that we cannot please everyone with every vote that we cast, but we can always continue to do what's right for all citizens of Rutherford County. As Ronald Reagan once stated, "All great change in America begins at the dinner table." Times may be tough for some right now, so I ask that you enlarge their territory so that they can prosper for themselves and for their families. You said that you are the way, you are the healer, and you are the provider. We know that tough times don't last always. As I close, I ask that you continue to protect all of our public safety personnel and our military. Continue to protect our school kids and our educators while they're on summer break session. We are forever grateful to live in the land of the free because of the brave. Be with those during this upcoming Fourth of July holiday season. As Bill Clinton once said, "There is nothing wrong with America that cannot be cured about what is right with America." So let us press our way forward and continue to make Rutherford County the greatest county in the state of Tennessee. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is pride and love that we salute the flag. Thank you. You may be seated. Call on our Rutherford County clerk, Lisa Crowell, to call the roll. Lisa?
Present.
Commissioner Piercey?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Commissioner Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Kusch?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
McMurray?
Here.
Commissioner?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano?
Here.
Forum 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get into the approval of our June 15 meeting minutes, I want to call on Pettis Reed for a kind of a special recognition. Pettis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask that the Farm Bureau, I believe they're already standing back here, I'd like to, on behalf of the County Commission, to say thank you to the Leadership Committee of the Rutherford County Farm Bureau for our breakfast this morning. This group back here is very involved in legislative issues of our Farm Bureau and anything that is involved with the farmers of our county. In fact, you're, I almost said pokes there, folks, but those are sacks right there that contain products from Rutherford County, things that we do grow here. And you actually had milk from the MTSU dairy out here, the last dairy in Rutherford County, and this is June Dairy Month, and I want to put that little plug in there, too. But we're so glad to have them with us tonight and today, and I'm used to saying night, but you'll notice in this group of ladies that we have one gentleman back there, John L. Beatty's there. I'll recognize him. He's always stood beside me. He was the best man at my wedding, and I'll have to, I'll have to give him credit for that. I had him there so I could keep an eye on him where he was, but, but we're glad to have all of you here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reed. This time, we will need to read and approve our minutes from our June 15 meeting and call on our chairman, Tim Treguch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the minutes along with others. Everything is in order. A move that we dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, to approve the June 15 meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. We have two people signed up for public comments this morning. First is Rob Mitchell, and his topic is tax increase.
Commissioners and citizens, Commissioner McMurray, when you said that the conversations start at the dinner table, that's exactly why I'm here this morning. My, my wife said that if I, if I didn't come up here, I couldn't come home. So she encouraged me to be here. Sweetheart, if you're looking, I'm here, I'm coming home. Commissioners and citizens of Rutherford County, extend my gratitude to each of you providing me with the opportunity to speak candidly about my concerns. I want to commend the dedication of Mayor Carr. Each of the hardworking commissioners, elected officials, department heads, it's no small feat to uphold our constitutional mandates while controlling costs. I stand before you today to address the proposed increase in the Rutherford County property tax. I oppose this tax. I believe it offers a superficial solution and fails to address the root cause of our financial challenges. It's merely a Band-Aid, it's a temporary fix. I imagine our budget, imagine our budget as a leaking bucket. Would it be wise to pour more water into it without first repairing the leaks? Clearly, such an action will only lead to further waste and inefficiency. Similarly, before we burden our hardworking citizens with higher taxes, we must address the leaks in our budget. The crux of the issue lies in how our county functions. We can no longer turn to blind eye to the waste of our harder, hard-earned resources. It's time to confront this matter head-on and begin with the necessary changes. We must particularly scrutinize every dollar, identify and eliminate duplication of services, and streamline operations to restore fiscal prudence. Raising taxes is not the solution we seek. It may be politically painful, but it's not a hard task to spend someone else's money. The money we spend is some mother's formula for her infant. It's someone's elderly parent's prescriptions. Instead, let us prioritize repair of our leaking budget. By doing so, we can ensure that every tax dollar is spent wisely and efficiently. We were elected to do what is hard. Harry Truman says, "The buck stops here." We were elected to solve problems and not pass blame. Together, let's find the correct solution and demand transparency, efficiency, and responsible government. Working together, we can establish the groundwork for a brighter future for Rutherford County. Thank you all for your unwavering commitment to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next is Susan Allen, planning for growth.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. Years ago, when Nancy Allen was mayor, the commission decided that a fiscal analysis had to be done for any new spending by the county. I don't know what happened to that. Growth will continue, and I think we have to start planning from a different place. Years ago, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance studied in depth the benefits of a fiscal impact analysis. This is a process that I believe can aid in planning and paying for growth. I think it would benefit the county if the commission has a workshop to learn about fiscal impact analysis in order to plan for growth. Back in the early 2000s, I did talk to Paul Tischler of Tischler Bise, who has, a company that has done the fiscal impact analysis and impact fees for Smyrna, Laverne, and Murfreesboro. He's full of knowledge, and I think he would all benefit from learning about this tool. This morning, I also looked up, I kind of reviewed my notes about Tischler Bise, and it's T-I-S-C-H-L-E-R-B-I-S-E. I think you ought to write that down. And also, SmartGrowthAmerica.com. SmartGrowthAmerica has downloadable documents that you can study on your own about fiscal impact, as well as affordable housing, and other topics related to growth. So SmartGrowthAmerica.com and TischlerBise, B-I-S-E, dot com. Thank you, and I hope you'll consider this, because I think all of you as a body need to understand that there are alternative ways to approach growth and, and paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Elections and confirmations. Steering vice chair Pettis Reed.
Commissioners, there is our, only one item on our elections and confirmations, item one. It brings your attention to commissioners, the election of requested notaries in Rutherford County for, here in June 2023. Commissioners listening, some notaries may be found on your iPad. These were placed on there earlier this morning. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at those. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the election of notaries. All those in favor, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Item G, resolution to approve our consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tim Treguch.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the consent agenda. There's been no opposition to anything on it. My motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Commissioner Johnson, any questions?
I had a quick question, please.
Commissioner Oliver?
Are the funds in these resolutions in addition to what's already been presented for budgets?
Are you talking about for this year's budget or next year's budget?
Yes, next year's budget.
So these funds are increased to the current year budget that we are in today, not the one you're voting on for next year. Now, however, those revenues are already budgeted in next year. That's where these revenues have come in higher than this year than were budgeted, or less, because we reduced some revenues as well for this year's budget.
Okay, so you say they've taken into consideration in preparation for next year's budget?
We have taken those into consideration, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Oliver? Good. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item H, we have no unfinished business, at least on my agenda, public hearings. We have none scheduled this morning. We're getting into our standing reports, and this is the one we're all here for today. Budget Finance Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P. Morning.
Start out with, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to this full commission for the work that you put in. Especially want to say thank you to Mayor Carr, his staff, our finance director, our assistant finance director, and these guys have gone above and beyond. If you've been watching our budget committee meetings and following it, I want to put out a heartfelt thanks to all the gentlemen that are on that committee. You've worked hard. We've had differences of opinion in the past. I like to point out how our budget committees usually came out with a unanimous vote. We hadn't done that in the times that I've been budget chairman. There's a difference there. But as I've reflected on it, and I was talking to Chairman Dodd about this a moment ago, seven of us agreeing on something versus us having a split decision is not a bad thing. Actually, it's caused more debate. It's brought out a lot more ideas, and it gives the county a chance to look at and reflect what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why we're doing it. But again, I want to give a heartfelt thanks to the budget committee. You guys worked hard, and I appreciate it. We've got four items we're going to look at today. I am not going to read every bit of these resolutions. Nick, if there's something I missed, you think I need to read, point it out, and we'll get that taken care of. We'll start with budget item A1, and it's a resolution to transfer the funds from 141 to 142, and this came out of the school board. Whereas federal project grants operate on a reimbursement basis, and funds are requested from the state of Tennessee by Rutherford County Schools for expenditures on at least a monthly basis, and whereas the Federal Projects Fund operates with a cash deficit at various times throughout the fiscal year due to the turnaround time needed for reimbursements from the state of Tennessee, and whereas government auditing standards consider a cash deficit in any fund to be a significant deficiency in internal control, and whereas Rutherford County Schools does not desire to operate any fund with a cash deficit. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Rutherford County Schools in Tennessee, meeting in session on this eighth day of June 2023, and by the County Commission of Rutherford County in Tennessee, meeting in session on the 26th day of June 2023. That's section one. The General Purpose School Fund shall be, shall transfer $3 million to the Federal Projects Fund by June 30, 2023. Section two, the $3 million transfer shall remain in the Federal Projects Fund as a committed fund balance from the General Purpose School Fund and may be repaid at any time as noted in the resolution passed by the Board of Education and County Commission. Section three, the resolution will take effect on June 28, 2023. The Secretary of the Board of Education shall include this resolution in the minutes of Rutherford County Schools. The county clerk shall include this resolution in the minutes of Rutherford County, adopted this eighth day of June 2023 by the Board of Education, and adopted the 26th day of June 2023 by the Rutherford County Commission. Mr. Chairman, I so move we adopt this.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to transfer funds from 141 to 142. Questions and comments? Of course, we'll be on the board for this. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Mr. P.
Well, I said I wasn't going to read everything in each of these. However, on this one, I will be reading the, the whole resolution. This is a resolution authorizing the tax level in Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023. Section one, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 26th day of June 2023, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, shall be 1.8762 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide, to provide revenue for each of the following funds, otherwise confirmed to the following levies. And I'm going to read these funds off quickly. General, county general, point, 0.7110, ambulance service fund, point 0680, the highway fund, point 0072, general purpose schools, point 5927, education capital projects, point 1, debt service, point 3973, for a total of 1.8762. Section two, be it further resolved that there is hereby levied a gross receipts tax as provided by law. The process of the gross receipts tax herein levied shall accrue to the above funds on a pro rata basis. Section three, be it further resolved that the county's slightest portion of the sales tax revenue will be divided as follows. Solid waste sanitation fund, 60%, general fund, 20%, road and bridge fund, 20%. Be it further resolved that the fuel tax revenue will be divided as follows. General fund, 30%, road and bridge fund, 30%, general purpose school fund, 40%. Section five, be it further resolved that the school facilities tax revenue will be divided as follows. Educational capital project funds, 50%, and general debt service fund, 50%. Section six, be it further resolved that interest earned on idle operating balances, with the exception of the special purpose fund and the drug control fund, will be distributed as follows. General fund, 55%, general purpose school fund, 25%, road and bridge fund, 5%, with the balance to the general debt service fund, provided that the finance director will monitor general purpose school fund available cash balances and interest rates to determine that the above allocation is justifiable. Section seven, be it further resolved that the delinquent county property taxes for the year 2022 and prior years, and the interest and penalty herein collected during the year ending June 30, 2024, shall be appropriated to the various county funds according to the subdivision of tax levy for the year 2023. The clerk and master of the trustees are hereby authorized and directed to make such appropriate accordingly. Section eight, be it further resolved that notwithstanding the allocations to certain funds are set forth in section one and section seven, and taxes paid with respect to property that is subject to the terms of the contribution agreement with the Industrial Bond Development Board of Rutherford County. Approved by the county on the 12th day of December of 2019, shall be deposited exclusively to the county general fund and at the full rate of $1.8762 on each $100 of taxable property. The clerk and masters of the trustee are hereby authorized and directed to make such appointments accordingly. Section nine, be it further resolved that all resolutions of the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, which are in conflict with this resolution, are hereby repealed. Section 10, be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it. This resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, resolved this 26th day of June 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll be on the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
I respectfully request a vocal roll call vote.
We've had a, a request for a voice roll call vote. Let me just say, according to our policies and our procedures, a voice roll call vote and us being on the board are one in the same. They're both recorded individually, but we've had a request to have an individual voice call vote, and I will accept that recommendation. So with this, we're going to call the roll, and you will say yes or no to the resolution, to the motion to approve the 2023, excuse me, 24 tax levy resolution. Ready? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver?
Nay.
Commissioner Piercey?
No.
Commissioner Rather?
No.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Davison?
Yes.
Commissioner Beverly?
Yes.
Commissioner Kusch?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Aye.
Yes.
And Paul Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Irvin?
No.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Chairman Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
No.
Commissioner McMurray?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
No.
Commissioner Serrano?
Yes.
Thirteen yes, eight no.
Thirteen yes, eight no. The resolution to adopt the 2023-24 tax levy is adopted. Commissioner P.
Next is a resolution to make appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2023. As I've stated, I'm not going to read all of this again. Nick, if you see something I need to add. I am going to give the totals of how this is dispersed through each office. Section one, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee on the 26th day of June 2023, that the amounts hereafter are set forth or hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, according to the following schedule. I'm going to read off the funds. General fund, $160 million, $21,841. Rutherford County Economic Development, $696,299. Total solid waste sanitation fund, $7 million, $750,000. Ambulance service fund- Ambulance service fund, $22,278,663. Special purpose fund, $20,000. The drug control fund, $588,000. The highway fund, $18,215,809. General purpose school fund, $518,420,946. The central cafeteria fund, $34,206,900. The educational capital projects fund, $18,000, Debt service fund, $69,523,393. The other sections, I am going to skip for now unless, as I said, Nick points out something else I need to pick up. We'll skip back to the last page here. Most of this has got to do where we appropriated funds to our nonprofits, and there's a lengthy list. Anyway, this is resolved the 26th day of June, 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move we adopt this.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. To approve the 2023-24 appropriation resolution. Questions or comments? For this, we'll be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Fourteen yes, seven no.
Motion passes. Mr. P.
The last thing that we've got, and we actually don't vote on, but this is a presentation by our finance director, and I'll call on Michael.
One thing before, one thing before I start on that. There was a, under item A, under the schools, there was an item A2. If after I talk about the bond anticipation note, if we could go back and vote on item A2. And then, back in the, a couple months ago, y'all approved of the high school additions, and as part of that, y'all approved us to issue a bond anticipation note. We have issued that, and part of the requirements of issuing that is to disclose that to the governing body, which is what we're doing so today. It does not require a vote, but we did issue that, and that documentation is attached on your iPads in front of you. That is a two-year bond anticipation note for $35,000 until we go to the bond market. Any questions on that? Thank you.
Here are no questions. I'm going to conclude with saying our next scheduled meeting is August the 10th, and at that time, we'll be actually receiving a survey to evaluate our finance director, and I think Chairman Harris said we'd also do the same thing. We do a yearly assessment of our directors for HR and the budget committee does one on our finance director. Anyway, thank you for your hard work and not.
Chairman P. If we can go back and vote on item A2. This is the budget amendment that was attached to the resolution to move the funds over for the schools' federal projects fund.
Question, please, before we move on. Mr. Smith, when you were reading what this statement was, you said $35,000, but it's $35 million. Is that correct?
It's $35 million.
Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Resolution A2, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows: to transfer funds to the federal projects funds for cash flow purposes, and increase in expenditures transferred to others of $3 million, and a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $3 million. Resolve this 26th day of June, 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item like J-A2. Any questions or comments? Of course, we'll be on the board for this. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman P. Item J2, Public Safety. Chairman Pettis, read.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report, but our next meeting will be Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 5:30 June 28th, and then we'll have a meeting in July, which is July 24th, at 5:30. If you'll pardon me while I have the mic, I do also want to invite all the commissioners back here in this room tomorrow morning. That is the scheduled meeting for our Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission, which is a regular meeting, but at the conclusion of that meeting, we're going to have a briefing on our Plan Rutherford, which is our comprehensive plan update. And we are having the, Jessica Hill, who is helping us put together this plan, will be here to give us that update, and any of you are welcome to be here to hear the update and see where we are as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. This might answer some of the questions that you heard this morning from maybe our public comment, and give you some insight as how far we are and where we're going as far as the comprehensive plan is concerned. Be glad to have you all here.
Thank you, Chairman Reed.
It's at 9:00 AM also, just like all of our other meetings.
Nine o'clock tomorrow morning. J3, Health and Education Committee. Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. We have no report for this month. Next meeting currently is still on the board, July 25th, 2023, 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you, Chairman Dodd. J4, Property Management Committee. Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no report, and our next meeting is July 27th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. J5, Public Works and Planning Committee. Chairman Mike Kusch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No report today. August 8th, 5:30 in this very room will be our next meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Kusch. J6, Steering Legislative Governmental Committee. Chairman Craig Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no report. Our next meeting is August 7th at 5:30.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Harris. Other business, one particular item, and I think you're all anxiously awaiting this. We usually don't meet in July. I've asked that the July meeting be put, be put on the calendar for July 13th, and then would make a decision today and communicate that decision, whether or not we're going to meet. Your chair has met with the legal department, the county mayor's office, to consider legal options that include some things that we've been doing with our development tax, county powers relief issues, those type of things. There are several legal options that we have. They're quite complicated and could be quite lengthy. Your chairman has reached a decision that the best avenue for us to take right now is to have conversations with our legislative delegation. They've shown a willingness to meet and talk this summer. Also, the development community, the real estate community, has also shown an interest in talking together with your county commission this summer. And before we jump headlong into legal action, I think that that's the best option for us to do, is to have those conversations before we commit to do anything. So that's what we're going to do. There's also, I think TASSER is looking at studying some of the very same issues that we're looking at. A couple of other counties are doing the exact same thing. So just a brief comment, we're not taking our foot off the gas. As we get into this fall and this winter with the legislative session next year, alternative taxes will be utmost on our agenda, and that's what we will communicate this summer with those groups that I've just mentioned. So our July 13th meeting is canceled. Other business, we have, anything else anybody wanted to bring up? Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Chairman.
Anthony Johnson.
Any of y'all that know me know that I'm not about myself. I'm not flashy. I don't brag. I'm just me. We're coming up on, pretty soon, coming up on the anniversary of our election from last year. We're all elected to do a job. I feel most of us have done that job. But I'll tell you, the last election, our mayor, Joe Carr, was running for mayor. He wasn't my man. I didn't vote for him. But Joe Carr has done his job. He's done what he was elected to do. He tried to rally the troops. He did. He told the truth. He addressed every issue. He went over this budget for hundreds of hours. Many other people did too. But Joe Carr, our mayor, has done his job. I know he's caught a lot of grief over it, so have some of us, but we were here to do a job. Mr. Mayor, everyone that worked on the budget, I really appreciate what you did, and you did the right thing. But Mayor Carr, you championed this. That was what you were elected to do. Whether people agree with it or not, that's what you were elected to do, and I applaud you for that. And I told you when you were running, and I told you after you were elected. If I thought you were right, I'd back you 100%. If I thought you were wrong, I wouldn't back you. I'd be against the idea, not you, but the idea. I would be against that. Well, I've been behind you 100% on this because I've watched what you're doing. You did your job, and thank you very much. There again, reiterate, we're here to do a job, and I feel the ones that voted yes on this budget did their job. The others think they did their job, but my view, you don't do your job if you just sit up here and say no to everything. You've got to pay the bills. Saying no is what got us in this mess, and we're trying to climb out of it. So let's all work together this coming year, work on all the issues that we're trying to put into place, or the things we're putting into place to address the issues, and be a team. We're all in it together. Whether I agree with you or you agree with me, we're all in it together. Let's do our job. There again, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Mayor Carr.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I want to say one thing. You're right on several points. I and Mr. Smith and Commissioner P. and many of you have worked literally hundreds of hours on this budget. I had a, if you'll forgive me, Commissioner Gooch, I want to recount a conversation that Commissioner Gooch and I had in my office this morning. And it's the diversity of this body. It's different perspectives. It's the values and principles each one of us have that is most valuable. And through that process, we have looked at a number of different solutions to try to deal with a truly unfortunate set of circumstances that are not of our making, but it's our responsibility to solve. And I can't appreciate more the different solutions that were brought forth to keep us from having to do this. Everything from what Commissioner Gooch was talking about with the fire tax, with Commissioner Irvin on dealing with the schools and how to move money around, Commissioner Piercy on the wheel tax. And I told our chairman this morning before we got started, I hope we will begin the process in August of looking at alternatives, just not the alternatives dealing with the delegation and the home building community, but all alternatives to make sure that the property taxpayers of Rutherford County are not continually burdened and saddled with the responsibility of paying for growth. But I do want to emphasize it's the, it's the different values and principles that all of us have that I think is the greatest quality of any deliberative body, but most especially this one. And I appreciate you standing by your convictions, regardless of the vote. Stand by your convictions and your principles, because that's what's going to move this body forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Carr. We've, believe it or not, got into shout-outs. The last two are just that, and I appreciate that. Let me kind of continue the shout-out.
Chairman, please, may I please?
You may. Commissioner Oliver.
Good morning. Commissioner Johnson, I respect you and I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comments, Mayor Carr. I just want to respectfully say that those of us that voted no, we did do our jobs. I may not have done hundreds of hours, but I did look at this, and I always feel like there's more than one solution. This solution just wasn't the one that I thought was the best for my constituents. So I do want to congratulate everyone for doing their job. I think we all did our due diligence. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. What I was getting ready to say is that as we're doing, these are really kind of semi sort of what we're talking about, shout-outs, and I'd just like to piggyback on what a couple of people have already said. Our budget committee, and I specifically like to name those guys, Chairman Robert P., Vice Chairman Paul Johnson, Steve Piercy, Commissioner Steve Piercy, Commissioner Craig Harris, Commissioner Wayne Irvin, Commissioner Trey Gooch, and Commissioner Chantel Serino for the hard work that they did. And those of us that sit through those budget committees, the decisions were not unanimous. And let me say that that is healthy for our community to hear ideas. That doesn't mean that we have to agree with them, but for us to hear those ideas, ideas stretch our knowledge. And it's going to require us to look at things differently as we get into this next year. So that process was very beneficial. I don't want to leave out Mayor Carr and his staff for all the work that they put in, and then our financial director, Michael Smith, and his staff for all the work that they put in. Today is the culmination of months and hours of hard work. Those of you that are new to the commission have learned, those of us that have been on the commission for a long time know that this process starts in the winter and goes right into the summer. It's not an easy process to go through, and this year has been trying and difficult, but we've made it through it. And whatever we communicate to the public is an individual choice to do, but we, once again, should be a unified body as much as possible. You can say I disagreed, but I understand why we did what we did. And that's probably a really good way to communicate to your constituents. It was not unanimous, but it was a process that we went through, and we got through it, and we adopted it, and it's time to move forward and make adjustments as we go. I mentioned Commissioner Serino being on the budget committee and thank him, and I'd also like to thank him for week after week and meeting after meeting giving me my Hershey bars and my mints. And Commissioner Serino, month after month and week after week in committee meetings, thank you for doing that. It's got me. week in committee meetings, thank you for doing that. It's, it's got me through and also helped me feed my grandkids a little bit every now and then, so thank you for that. Other shout-outs or other comments?
Chairman Phillips.
Commissioner Piercy.
Normally, I would have let that water run off my back about not doing my job. But my job up here is just like the other 20 Commissioners in this room. It's to represent the people that sent you up here. It's not to get on a train going the right way or the wrong way. Always keep that in mind. I voted against this tax increase. Other offers had been presented. None were able to get traction, so I represented the people in my district that asked me not to raise their property taxes, and I think I done my job. Thank you.
Other comments, other shout-outs. Commissioner Kush. You have the podium.
Thank you. I'm going to turn a personal concern into a shout-out. The tax increase, my biggest issue is the elderly and the fixed income. It breaks my heart to put any financial burden on those in the fixed income. Those who have paid taxes and lived in Rutherford County for decades that are burdened, particularly with new schools being built, when their kids and grandkids have long gone through, and they've paid their price already. So that breaks my heart. There is a tax freeze, as we all know, for those that qualify. And my shout-out, and this is going to sound weird, because I haven't been very supportive of the General Assembly in the last couple of years because of the development tax fights we've had and the things like that, but the tax freeze has been around $48,000 per household, which, you know, if you can afford a good investment advisor, you can cheat your way around that. But if you're on Social Security, if you have two in the household, your Social Security will be more than the $48,000. So that, to me, that number has been loathfully low, so hard to qualify. But thankfully, beginning next year's tax season, our General Assembly has upped that number to a $60,000 threshold. So for those of you who know folks who need the help and are making $60,000 or less, encourage them to apply for the tax freeze credit, okay? That's a big jump from $48,000 to $60,000. So thank, I will thank the General Assembly for that when we have a chance. I'm still going to fight them on the development tax and the alternate tax thing, because I've been butting heads on that, but thank them for that, and please help those in need of a tax freeze to encourage them, if they meet that threshold, to get out and apply, okay? Thank you. That's my shout-out.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush. Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kush, sort of, I was getting ready to sort of say the same thing. I hate to bring that camera over here to where Commissioner Kush and myself sit, because we're tearing it up, I'm sure, with these coats that we have here, but we wanted to get back to the Fourth of July coming up here pretty soon. But when we're discussing taxes right here, taxes is not new. You can drop back over 2,000 years ago where the Pharisees were questioning Christ about taxes. If you'll go to Matthew 22, where the Pharisees pulls out a denarius and looks and holds it up to him, he says, "Are we supposed to pay the Romans taxes?" And Christ takes the coin and looks at it, said, "Whose picture is on it?" And he says, "Given to Caesar what is Caesar's." So that argument over taxes hasn't ended for all that many years, and I don't think it will ever end, and we'll continually be doing this. But I, too, would like to say appreciation to our Budget Committee who has worked hard. I've sat back here on those seats right there probably longer than what I have spent sitting in some sermons over here in some churches, and they have diligently gone about that as well as I may. But I do want to mention something a little bit more fun than taxes right now as a shout-out. One of the oldest Fourth of July celebrations will be happening this Fourth of July in Rockvale at the Ruettens, who the Ruettens is one of your oldest civic groups in Rutherford County, will be holding their Fourth of July picnic. Once again, all of you are invited to come out for that and be a part of that, because it's, it's a great opportunity to celebrate the Fourth of July in a community sitting. And they have something to celebrate this year, is what's happening out there in that community as far as we're getting a new public safety facility there as well as other things. And I think it's an opportunity that we'd love to have as many Commissioners come out and be a part of that, too. So I did want to get that in there. It starts at 10 o'clock and runs to 2 o'clock. There's a lot of food. There's a lot of crafts. There's a lot of things going on. And those of you that want to take out some of your anguish over these taxes, we're going to have a car smashing out there. So come out and, and beat that car up every time you think about your taxes. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Anyone else? Rather.
I am not going to talk about taxes.
Thank you.
I think it was on June 6th. There, some of you may have read the article or heard about it, about an autistic young man on 8:40 walked down the interstate. And a very aware conscientious deputy, young deputy, looks like he's 12 in the picture, noticed that and put his life at risk and very likely saved the young man's life. He was autistic, and I think mostly nonverbal, if not nonverbal. You know, we have expectations as citizens for our Sheriff's Office, even the Fire Department, EMS. Citizens have expectations. And this deputy, Michael Bennett, I'm surprised that Michael did something like that, but you know, we're good guys. Michael Bennett risked his life and met every expectation and saved other man's life, and now he's back at home safe. And that's my shout-out.
Very good. Perfect shout-out. Thank you. Finance Director, Michael Smith.
I really just want to thank my staff. They really pulled the heavy lifting while I'm working on the budget, and so I just want to thank them. I could not do this by myself. The Assistant Finance Director, Mark Tucker, is here every night with me as well, so just going to give a special shout-out to them, the entire staff, for all the heavy lifting they do when, when I can't be there. So thank you.
Commissioner Gooch.
I have a shout-out, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
His first budget year, I would like to shout-out Director Michael Smith. What he will not tell you, I will tell you. He would show up here early in the morning and work late many hours. And I know this, because during one of our budget meetings, I looked up and he was nodding off. And then when he went like this, the mayor had to wake him up, so shout-out to the mayor for waking up the Finance Director. We love you, Michael.
At least we digress. Anyone else? Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I want to give a shout-out to Rob Mitchell. He had a gathering. He is promoting something called Promoting Pawns, which is teaching juveniles how to play chess. I applaud him for that. We had come down to me and him playing. I lost. I threw a piece and hit one of the kids in the eye. And Rob, could you tell his parents I'm sorry? But good job, Rob. Thank you.
If you've got your calendar in front of you, July's probably gotten really confusing for you, so let me run through it real quick. Wednesday night, that's the 28th, Wednesday night, Public Safety meeting will, Public Safety will have their June meeting. In July, first thing on our calendar is a CCRC meeting. It looks like at 1 o'clock on July 6th. Juvenile Detention at 1 o'clock on July 10th. We have a Planning Commission meeting at 6:00 PM on July 10th. Opioid Committee meeting at 9:00 AM on July 12th. BZA, of course, meets at 4:30 on July 12th. Craig Harris has a shrimp boil at the airport on July 14th. Is that correct? And we have a purchasing meeting scheduled for July 18th at 4:30. Planning meeting at 9:00 AM on the 24th. Public Safety will meet in July on the 24th, 5:30. Health and Ed will also meet in July on the 25th at 6:00 PM. The Insurance Committee is still on our calendar for the 27th at 1:00 PM. Property Management is on our calendar for the 27th at 5:30 PM. That's what we have for July. A lot of cancellations, but some things still being mentioned. Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I hadn't relayed to you, and I apologize. We do not have an opioid meeting for the month of July, and our next one will be August 16th at 10:00 AM. I apologize for that.
July 12th opioid meeting is canceled. Anything else? Once again, today is a historic day for the county. It's been a good day for the county, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good open communication, and I can't tell you how much your Chairman appreciates that. Thank you for your time, your attendance, your participation. With that, we are adjourned. Have a good July.